Okay, so just a reminder for everybody to please silence your cell phones. We've got a contribution by one of our citizens. It's a little jar up there with a slot in the top. So if the phone goes off, we're going to start collecting funds for the Sarah Maud Mason Boardwalk Fund. I'd also like to remind everybody to please be courteous to your fellow citizens. When they're speaking, please keep your comments to yourselves until it is your time to speak. We want to make sure that we are respectful of everyone. Thank you. So the first item on the agenda is the consideration and approval to execute the progressive inspection agreement. That was, we tabled it last meeting, the fourteenth, because we had a typo in it and councilors needed additional time to review and adjust the information. So...
So move. Second, I'm putting it in the table.
Okay. So discussion?
Yes, like I said, last meeting, there, I know we put a RFP out when Mayor Nevel was the mayor, and we were looking, bringing in other contracts. I know Alpha gave me one, I think Councilman Conway stated he got one from another company. And I was wondering how we veered away from that and not opening up, just to look at other contracts, to look at other opportunities, especially with the complaints we got from builders and residents. And we had that one meeting where they stood up and spoke about some of their concerns. So I wanted to first ask, whatever happened to that? Would it hurt to entertain it?
The RFP was premature. We had, already had an RFP with responses. The county withdrew from contention. They didn't want to participate when we met back. Alpha didn't provide a lot of information. And so we were working with progressive. In fact, you were working with progressive, with Ron Frank...
For a while, yeah.
Right, for a while. And then that went over to the then-Mayor Nevel, who offered a 30-day extension to work through the kinks on the contract. So during the absence of Mayor Nevel at that time, I took on that responsibility, incorporated your notes, and moved forward with the selection, with the active participants of that RFP process at that time. And so I know that you had said that you were going to pass on any emails, etc., complaints to Mr. Ernest, so that he could address those, because now building inspection is under public services.
Yeah. And also, Mr. Ron Frankenstein, because of made accusations, that he made some statements, and I offered to give him a copy of those. And he never, he never came to see me or sent me an email, text message, phone call to see.
Did you send them to Mr. Ernest?
No, but Mr. Ron Frankenstein wanted them. I'll send them to Mr. Ernest. Nope.
Yeah, in fact, that was my understanding, was that you were going to send everything to Mr. Ernest for review and discussion, and for Mr. Ernest to address them.
Okay.
Frank Frankenstein, Mr. Ernest.
And also, I remember I brought this up when the builders came up with their concerns with Mr. Ron Frankenstein. And I know a new house bill was passed this year, I think it was House Bill 70103. And what that does, it gives options to builders. If they're not happy with their services of the town building inspector, they can go outside.
Great.
And they're seriously entertaining that if we take on this contract. What would that do to us? We lose a lot of money coming into the town. And if they start to Talashay project, is that what Florida has?
Yes, Florida.
Yeah. The town will lose substantial amount of money.
The grants would still come through our town.
You'd lose a lot of money, though. You'd lose substantial amount of money. I think it was 75%. I don't know what that happens to, you know, to the revenue coming in. So that was both my attention by the builders. So we should seriously look at that as well before we move forward, because we don't want them using someone else.
Well, my understanding from them was that we had certain items to address, making sure that the inspector was available during business hours, making sure that the process was automated as far as we could, that there weren't final sign-ups via text and that sort of thing. And I know that Mr. Ernest and Mr. Frank Frankenstein have that list. I also know that those builders confirmed that they thought that he was incredibly good inspector, and thought that the quality of the housing that we have here in Howie was primarily due to his management of the inspection process. And I think that that is something we don't want to lose, that we want to be known and continue to have that expertise on our staff or available to us. And that has actually always been the case, where if somebody doesn't want to work with our building inspector, they can go elsewhere. That has always been the case. So I do know of a couple of instances of that.
And they did mention that, as they spoke about their concerns, and they did compliment on that. I think the concerns outweighed that. Yes, they did say that, but there were more concerns, and other than we're sure that he's keeping an eye on the building and making sure they follow the codes and they're built well. But there was a lot more complaints than compliments. But once again, I just want to bring that to your attention. It should be taken into consideration when we vote, as well as the outside opportunity of inspectors coming in, us losing the money.
This is also a year, an annual contract. So if we do validate that this year, we have the opportunity to review it and make a decision with the time.
I think there's a clause in there as well, that we can obviously up that as a pathway through the contract, based on certain criteria.
I believe it's, isn't it Heather's?
Six days.
Sixty days?
Yep.
So it's not even halfway through the contract, it's just a mutual?
Yeah. Yeah. So we have that.
We have a contract yet, so you can't count the days?
No, no.
That's exactly right.
And the other concern I had was obviously the reinspection fees. And when I was meeting with them, it was 100% to him and zero to us. I recommended 50/50. I think when I last left him, it was 60/40. And I think it's...
Eighty/20.
Eighty/20 him. So I just thought it should even out to 50/50.
Well, as we discussed last time with the 80/20, I looked at the scope of the work for the re-inspections and what was entailed. And I do believe that the 80/20 is appropriate to the effort that's put in.
Guys covered pretty much everything. My thoughts is that we had many years of successful inspecting with Mr., with Ron. He's, no one argues how knowledgeable he is about the code. As a matter of fact, his knowledge sometimes means he knows them better than the builders. And I really, when I selected vendors in my other lives, it was always when somebody could say, you end up, as one of the gentlemen said, Howie has better houses because of Mr. Ron Frankenstein. And I think, I don't know what better, they may, you can't have the foxes controlling the hen house. And while we do have good builders, and I guess many of the people that have recent homes could probably comment on the quality of the builders, but the last thing we want is any decline in the quality of building in Howie. So, and the fact he reports to Mr. Ernest. As far as the 80/20 hasn't been a consultant, which basically Ron is, or any of our consultants are, is that, you know, you're buying your own car, you're paying your insurance, all those, there's, you're about 50% in the hole in every dollar you make before you even start looking at other things. So, and in the years, in the years where we had no building, I think one year we had only one, Ron didn't receive any money, because there was, there was no inspections, or there were very few inspections. I do not have the exact number. So if you look at his past history, then he had the zero years, and now the last couple of years has been pretty good. And the future is probably going to decline again until we have some other developments started. So I'm very much in favor of renewing our contract with Ron, because he's done a great job. He's not perfect, by the way.
That's, that's a human being.
As an inspector.
And I know that.
Do you?
Yes.
Any other comment?
Call a question.
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
No.
Counselor McGill?
No.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
Mayor from Tim Clonroy?
Yes.
Counselor Nevel?
Yes. Thank God that's a one.
So the next item is the Town Consumption Permit Corrective Action Plan. An update on that for the council. We...
Because of Mr. Ernest's...
We can. Mr. Ernest Public Services has to leave for some company. And so we would, it has been suggested that we talk about the cup, and then move down and look at the public services report, if that's okay with everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
He may have commented on that.
Yes. Mr. Ernest, the corrective action plan, just that we're working on it, I guess.
We're working with, we're here right now, Senator Whitaker, we have, it'll take us the entire year to get ready for next May, which is... Right now, we're using about 100,000, about a million gallons a week. That's what happens, my, this morning at 6:00, we were running 600 gallons a minute. So last year, we over our cup by 40 million gallons. This year, we're going to run over again. It's just a simple matter of...
Can you get closer to the microphone, Mr. Ernest?
Five bucks.
Okay. Oh, and please, everybody silence your phones.
You can simply use permit as what, as what we call a cup. It's what our water from the St. John's DPD, where we get, we actually pipe it. We're using way over our budget right now. We can produce 256 million gallons a day, but we only have rights to build a hundred, to a million five. So right now, we're running way over that. We have to adjust it, and we will be doing that in the next few months. We're going to put out a leak leak to all of you, to the whole town, on how to water, how to irrigate, and how to save our water. All the towns are doing it, we're no different. We have to do the same thing.
So I also know that you're going to give a presentation to the Garden and Civic Club on, at Monday's luncheon, so that we'll make that presentation available to all the citizens via the website as well.
That's true. We have a written program that we will pass out, and we may do the same thing in the library later, if you'd like to.
Wonderful. Thank you.
John, quick question. Has this over occurred since New York come online?
Yes, but we were prepared, pretty much prepared for it. The last year, it ran over us. We put the well in for the purpose of the new development company, what, seven or eight years ago. So all of us have been paying that 10 dollar impact the entire time. If that well was put in, for the new developments that came in, highway. Building codes do not address the issue of how to use irrigation, how to protect water. They will in the future. It's our fault, and we take that.
So one of the items in the corrective action plan, besides the pamphlet and the information, will be to expand our water usage ordinance?
Yes. We have done already, that we have stolen from someone else, that's what we put it. It fits the White Rose, actually St. John's Water System. So we'll be presenting that before you, after the first year, you can't do that in the first year.
Mr. Ernest, was our allowance, did our allowance go up before Venetia?
He's standing in the back, I don't know if there's any seats.
We've got this five years ago. It's already set in place. It's set in place. We have to renew the cup every five years, and 2022 is when we have to do it.
Do you think it will go up a couple of that now, or not?
Not necessarily. We have to control our usage, right? But I'm saying this because we have more people coming to town. Sure. They understand that. I don't really see a problem with it. But that's part of it. We didn't anticipate this much usage.
The current cup does cover the population as it's outlined right now in Bieber. And so it currently says 1,456 or something like that, citizens. And we're not very far over that as far as our population goes. So the new cup, as Mr. Ernest was saying, will include an estimate for growth if Talashay and the other two developments do come online.
It sounds like a terrible number when you say 40, 40 million gallons over, but it's not a drop in the bucket of what we use and the other towns use. It just sounds awful.
And St. John's River Water Management District is also considering reducing the allocation per person.
Yes.
So even if our, our population goes up, if they move forward with this change in the gallons per person per day, our cup could save. So we really have to look at that and work through that process.
And that's something we cannot control. That is a state mandate.
So, Mr. Ernest, the other thing, you want to talk about, I want to skip to your report. It's item number 10 in the book. It's health trees.
Sure. Our report for this month, as we give at least eight items, we completed replacement of 19 outdated hydrants in the town, with a savings of $64,000 from the original contract. We painted all the hydrants in Venetia that are on the Black Rose now. Installed 10 new water meters, five cobbles, and five irrigation. We repaired, we repaired. Replaced five old curb stocks. That means that on the main is a fountain. The old valves in town were hand valves. They rusted away. We replaced at least one a week because they break. We replaced the chlorine pump that well freed. It doesn't mean anything to you, but it does on your drinking water. We've replaced a six-inch broken sewer line in Venetia. That was done months ago by a contractor. We have all the information on that. Well, removed one oak tree on South Lexor that fell on a truck. Now, the picture, you have the picture in the packet. Plus, we took down, I believe, five, yes, five ear trees, or four ear trees, which were rotten in the core and pretty close to falling.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think that's the extent of what you need to be here for, if you want to go, unless you want to be here for Bishop's Gate later.
You want to do Bishop's Gate?
I don't think Ben is here yet.
Hmm?
Oh, yes, Ben. Excellent. Can you come up, please?
Sure.
I apologize for all the skipping around, but I think we'll, we'll be okay. It's number four in the new business section.
Mayor, I brought a compare version of what we looked at on the 14th to what we have now, if that's helpful. Can you pass through?
That's the line version, so that we can see exactly what was changed.
Do you need a motion first? Does it matter? You need a motion first?
Yeah, we can.
So move to approve the race water agreement?
Sorry.
No, we can discuss. This is the line date. The agreement was in the packet, but this is the item that identifies what was changed. Red line, maybe. So as we had discussed at the meeting on October 14th, we changed the agreement so that it removed ownership of the line along, is it County Road 48? County Road 48 between Bishop's Gate and where they're going to bore under the road to connect to the CDD. We had discussed the liability for the town, and as a council agreed that we did not want ownership of that line, because it had no benefit in the future. None of the other developments, or the other development on Lake Hill, would connect to it because it is too small. And, excuse me, really didn't have any responsibility, or, and it was also on FDOT land. Excuse me. So we've gone forward with an agreement that takes out that ownership. And currently, in our, we don't have in our charter, or in our ordinances, in our ordinances, any fee components for wastewater. And so the idea is to charge Bishop's Gate the same amount that we're currently charging any of our residents that are connected to the CDD.
And Mayor, if I may add, there is a statute that says that you will charge the same amount to a development or property owner that's outside of your town boundaries. And so I think if you wanted to entertain an idea of charging an amount that's less, since the statute is specific that you can only charge the same or more, you would need to do a study and justify a lower rate for everyone. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't, I'd probably fine. I'd take this out. Ben, how many, how many units would come on year one, year two, roughly? We don't hold you to it.
Yeah, sure. There's, we would, 84 units would come online, and there's, in the agreement, it's going to be billed per ERU. So it'd be 84 units being billed from month one, ideally June of next year. And to the, really, I came this evening to discuss, really, that retail portion of that, because as Bishop's Gate, we were, it makes sense for us to build and own and maintain and repair the entire system. We're all in agreement with that. When the neighboring land opted a year and a half to, whenever it was, to opt out of any potential pioneering or future connection, it became an independent system for Bishop's Gate. So really, the only future ERUs that will come online are within the Bishop's Gate community. I mean, up to 204, 205, so a significant number, but still just the ones in the community. And so we're great with "we" being the HOA. I'm speaking on behalf of the Bishop's Gate HOA, when I say "we," because that's the, that's the party. We are fine with that. We're fine to own and maintain and repair the entire system. The idea came up, though, we're, we are, as an HOA, respectful of the existence of retail rates, as, you know, as they function within municipalities, communities, others. With the change of taking the pipe from town ownership and responsibility to HOA ownership and responsibility, we were hoping to find a mechanism to take a portion of that retail rate and put it in some type of non-touchable escrow for maintenance and repairs of that line only. So we're on, you know, high level, still paying the retail rate, no, no issue there. But it didn't make logical sense to pay the retail rate and not have, and just sort of have that money go away, and not have something set aside, whether that's 20% of the difference between the, what the town pays for wholesale and retail. Whatever that number is, that wouldn't be, I don't think necessarily appropriate for discussion. I'm happy to. But that was the, that's the idea, is can we, can we identify a mechanism where high level, we're paying the retail rate, same as everyone, we own, maintain, repair, but a portion of that retail, or a portion of that delta between wholesale and retail, goes into a non-touchable escrow only for that line, only for, from our property line to where it connects to Mission Inn, because everything internally to the community has from day one been Bishop's Gate responsibility. So that's really the only outstanding question in our mind. Everything else...
So I, what does everybody think of that? The, so what we were, we are saying is that they would pay the retail rate, but the town would then hold some monies, a portion of that money that they're paying in an account, and they would be able to draw on that for repair of that line if there were a break or an issue with it. And so we would have to determine what percentage is appropriate for that.
Yeah, a lot of things were discussed.
But what's changed, I think, is that they are responsible for 100, you know, John, and I'm speaking for John, but his biggest concern was, once we got that line from their property to the manhole in Mission Inn, that somehow we would be pulled into spending our time, our money, our resources. And so we negotiate the deal where they own that line now. And so basically, I, it's kind of like an ideal customer. There are no, there are no costs. It's just a revenue stream. And to the people in the audience, it's about, about 20, that's why I asked, if we have 80, my math's right, we have 84 times $22 a month, it's about $22,000 a year revenue for help maintain our sewers.
Net, net revenue.
Net revenue, yeah. So, you know, it's not, it's not a bad deal. It's a good deal for Howie. It's just whether or not the complications, if there's something to be fixed or not. And to your point, Ben, how, how big does that fund have to get? Let's say there are no issues for five years or 10 years.
Good question.
The escrow account.
Yeah, no, no. And the answer is, I don't know, but a couple mechan, a couple suggestion mechanisms. Maybe it's in an escrow, an interest-bearing escrow account, where once it reaches 50 or 100 grand, the interest is going to be enough to handle any repairs that are going to come up. And then the capital just sits there until the line itself needs to be replaced in 50, 60, 70, however many years. So maybe we just treat the interest as, as repair and operation, and the base capital that's ever been contributed for those decades as a line replacement. You know, again, still owned and responsibility of the HOA, just with that, with that agreed rate.
The sinking fund, basically.
Exactly. That's the term we were throwing around, yeah.
So Heather, can you take that away? And do you have any precedents or any?
No, but I will create the contractual provision.
Thank you.
Is it, yeah, this kicks the can again, Ben, is that? Well, it's kind of hard to negotiate something and have legalese. I don't know when your start date is.
No, well, our start, our start date was two, was two weeks ago from today. But that, but I'm acknowledging on behalf of the HOA that that, that the time from then to now has nothing to do with the town of Howie. Now, if we get this provision set and we're ready to go, done, moved over, you know, with it, moved on, we'll, we'll start the project.
If you have, if the council has parameters for me, we can agree to the agreement and perhaps ask for public comment on that. And then if you want to approve the agreement this evening, subject to me working out the language and the parameters with Ben and his attorney.
And that would be, I would agree with that.
And if we just want to put up 100,000, up to $100,000. Ben, you just need to tell me how you want it to work.
I would, so if it's, I would propose a percentage of the town's net between wholesale and retail. That way, if you guys ever get wholesale pressured, I want, we as each, we want to remove any risk or any future compression of margins for you or anything like that. So a percentage of the difference between wholesale and retail, 20%, goes into an escrow or a sinking fund. The capital stays in there indefinitely until the line needs to be replaced, moved, whatever the case is. And any interest from that could be used for repairs and maintenance. That seems pretty, would seem simple to me.
Okay. Up to $100,000 for the...
I mean, the line, we're, we're paying, the line itself from, from that manhole to the community today is costing us 220 grand.
Okay.
So I would say, I would say, I would say 200.
200? Okay. All right.
I like one other thing. It makes me feel, John kind of said, what happens if we're the only ones there to help them? You know, I kind of like a black, and they call them a black swan, or what we don't know, that we don't know, is that they also could use that fund, pay the town to make a, to use our resource for some month. I can't even imagine what it would be. But that, that escrow fund would be available for us if we're the only ones that could help them, because they may have their own contractors, but somehow they can't get there. And you got 84 people sitting over there without sewers. And then John's forced to do something, that little provision that said that escrow account is paid for repairs, etc., including any expenses as a town. And that way, that way, we can go to sleep at night going, okay, we're getting, we're getting that fee every month, and we have, maintain our no-risk policy, if you will.
I want to share that. Public service wants to share with you that. Service wants to security that a year from now, if something fails, that line fails... if something fails, that, that line fails, there's a way to pay for it, other than out of our conference.
So we have.
Because a year, they have two-hundred-thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And I'd, and I'd love it if, if we didn't have a cap on that capital amount, both for the sake of the town, and then maybe the provision is, when the line is replaced, if there's a couple hundred grand sitting over there, then the town can sort of scoop that and then the whole process starts over.
Okay. So no cap then?
And we're still with, win-win all the way around.
Any other comment?
Tell you what that line would cost to replace in five years, and I want to become the stockbroker.
Seven years.
Is there any public comment on this?
Yes.
Are you going to? Can you say your name and address, please?
My name is Denise Howard, and I live at four-four-four Belusino Place in Howie Hills. And besides this escrow that you're asking us to take out of the money that we're supposed to get, are you yourself, as an HOA, going to have any funds whatsoever to help with that? Or is this the only amount of money that's going to be available for anything that happens to your system?
Good question. Under the agreement, we as an HOA are responsible for owning and maintaining and paying for everything within our community. That's been a vision for ages. And we have, we have a service agreement in place. We have the finances to do so. We have that. This is only for this exterior, this external line.
Only for that external line?
Yeah, only for the external line.
But are you yourself, as an HOA, just?
Under this scenario, we wouldn't escrow anything additional for the external line. No, we would have still.
But you, but you have your own escrow for your system. Are you going to build up an escrow for your systems?
Definitely, ju, just like, just like our roads or just like our pool or anything. It'll be another line item in those, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Mr. Mile.
Who's going to compute this amount every month, every quarter, every year? Is it going to be done by the public service director? Is every single contract you do going to have its unique little terms? And then you're going to have somebody? When you consider the audit report later, you may note some of the repeat findings in there related to the weakness of your finance and administrative staffs. This is just an example of the type of thing that usually falls on the finance and administrative staff. And if every single time somebody does something, you've got all sorts of unique little things written into the agreement. You've just complexed it up tremendously.
I'm fine with annually from our side.
I can't see who it is, but there's a hand up back there.
Cynthia Smith, three-oh-eight North Palm Avenue in Howie Hills.
Can, Ben, do you think we could get the? Thank you so much. Just going to enlist you right here.
I didn't want to do that. Hi, I just, my name is Cynthia Smith, three-oh-eight North Palm Avenue, Howie Hills, Florida. Just wanted to know what the benefit would be of handling this situation any differently than you would handle a pool or any of the other areas in Mission, in your subdivision. So also what the benefit to the town would be to act as a bank? Because that's sort of what it sounds like we're acting as.
So currently, thank you. Currently, we are, Bishop's Gate is in our 180 for the CDD. And so it's our responsibility to manage at least the administrative function, the billing function of the connection of Bishop's Gate to the CDD through the same mechanism that we currently use for all of our in-town residents, just because of the location, that they're in that 180. It is a complexity that we hadn't discussed until today to manage that fund. The other option is to reduce the, the fee or increase depending on the appropriate take on the amount of effort that we're putting in and the amount of ownership and responsibility that Bishop's Gate has. We would have to then do some sort of a study to understand what the appropriate rate would be and allow Bishop's Gate to manage their own escrow, et cetera. So we, we have to make that decision, whether we're going to do a study to determine the appropriate rate or whether we're going to have a contract that includes some sort of an escrow value for it. And there is nothing that says that we can't start out with the escrow and then revise the agreement at a time such that we can do the study and turn the escrow back over. We would have to hire somebody. We would have to pay for it. Any other comments? So we have a motion in a second, but we have also decided that we are going to change the scope of the document at this point, or discussed, including the escrow value in the agreement. So what would you like to do?
Do we have the option of bringing it back after we make the changes and recommendations?
We absolutely do.
I recommend we do that.
So we, we had a motion in a second to accept the agreement. So now we're going to vote to not accept the agreement.
Well, to table it.
No, we're, we already had a motion in a second to entertain it. But we don't know, we don't have. That's right, that's right. So we should vote to table.
I accept.
I don't think, he didn't make.
I didn't make one, no.
No, no. We have an open motion right now.
Yeah, we have a motion to second discussion. It's on them to.
I move to table it. Second motion.
Okay. All in favor?
I agree.
Thank you. So we're going to table this. We'll put it on the next agenda as soon as we figure out.
Yeah, I think we'll be good to get it done next agenda and then just let me know, because I know that Monday is, I think, Veterans Day.
That's right.
So just let me know how that meeting works.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Lawrence. Is Representative Sabatini still here?
Yes, sir. He left.
He left. Yes, thank you. We're back on the agenda now. Item number three was the, there is the discussion to create and establish a charter review committee. We did not determine how best to find people for that committee or for that board. And so, and we have, we also have to establish the board through resolution. So I have heard previously through other governments that they, each councilor goes out and solicits the participation of two or three candidates. I'd like ideas.
So I like the one that Heather passed out yesterday.
It's very simple, Mayor.
Yeah, this kind of fits with, Matt, you've looked at stuff too. This kind of fits with other towns have done.
And that's actually within their charter, too. That process.
Give me a question I was, and it's open to the, to discussion. Is it five, five members or seven? Seeing you want a bigger cross-section. But then how do you choose those others? Yeah.
Can you?
Sorry.
Thank you.
I, I, it's just, would it be better to have like up to seven? Or leave it at five? Which I can live with either. I just thought maybe a few extra brains working on it.
Yeah, I think the more we can get, the better. Also, if you do a cross-section around town, not from just a certain section of town. So if we can section off town and get so many people from certain sections, to get them on the board, that'd be great.
But if we allow each councilman, would you say recruit? Who is it?
If each council person would like to choose one person, and then maybe the council as a whole chooses two? Would we get applications? I don't, just to.
Yeah, yeah. Some things I read, I mean, I think if we all went out, got two applicants each, this way we have something to pick from, and then we can go from there rather than just bringing one in.
They are, we do have. Right, we do have subdivisions within the town, but not all of the houses. For example, there's a section on the west side that isn't included in any subdivision. It's just there.
And people would be able to volunteer, like any other committee, and then we bring in two names. And then everybody gets one, and then the last two would be voted at, voted at large.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
You have a copy, sir.
Yeah, I definitely think we should move on it, though. You know, we have elections coming up in 2020, and I know the towns would want to vote for their mayor, so it's something we really got to move on since we have a strong mayor town charter, and we're working under a weak town mayor rules with the state.
Exactly.
So.
Keep in mind, if you go to a strong mayor, well, that's for the committee to decide. One reason, the, what, my reading was, council stays out of it until we approve whatever goes on, but you stay out of it because we're, by beast political, and theoretically, the committee is going to be less political. So would, so we have a motion, I move, that we proceed you to amend? Is that what we need to do here?
We can, it just can be a discussion item, and I can bring back a resolution, if you like, based on what you just discussed. Or a council member can prepare the resolution, however you would like to do it. And then you can talk about it at the next meeting and have, vote on it and have public comment on it.
I do believe.
Sorry, Mayor.
I believe that Darian started drafting a resolution for that. So I'll contact her when she gets back. And if not, then we'll look at something and then have you review it and refine.
Whatever you can recommend to move forward the fastest, because obviously the holidays are coming up. Not going to have as many meetings. So whatever we can do to get those applicants in and, and start this process.
On the first meeting of next month, that should be totally adorable.
And then, yeah, we can choose the committee. Maybe they have first meeting in January, but they can set the, an agenda. I'm thinking, you don't want these meetings over Christmas in Thanksgiving, but you can have everything together.
To get ready for the second meeting in January, basically.
Is there any cost to us, other than just printing it out? Once they, we decide to change, whatever we can.
Yes, there's quite a bit of cost for, not for the charter review specifically, but for getting it on the ballot for voting. That, that's quite a large expense.
No, it's, if you actually, didn't I read your thing?
I believe it depends on whether you're going to go for a special election. Sometimes your supervisor of elections will allow you to use their general election ballot. And it just depends on what your supervisor of election says.
Okay. So we will confirm that.
It can be free if it's in the general election.
Maybe.
And one estimate, another was eight thousand dollars if you have a, your own special election.
And those ordinances and other things.
Yeah, from what I read, it doesn't take too long once you get the committee together to come up with something. So if we start the process in January, even if we're allowed to have some kind of special election in May or June, this way, when November comes around, the people have an opportunity, if it comes to that, as far as voting for a strong.
So you said you want a special election in May or June, or you want to wait till November, when it can be on the ballot?
I'm saying, if, what I've read, they've, they've gotten committees together and come to a conclusion within a couple months and have it ready to present to the county to ask for a special election in May or June to find out what that cost is, that varies.
Sure.
So it's something we want to research.
Also, seeing you've done some research, is that, do they charge per each one that we change? Or is it all one section? Like, we, we change ten things, do we get charged for ten? Or do we get charged for just one lump sum?
Those are good questions. I don't really know. We, that is research that needs to be done, so we understand. If they're, the charter really needs a good review.
Oh, I know.
It is fifteen years old, and there are some things on it that are very antiquated and really need to be addressed. So I, I agree a hundred percent of that. So this is far overdue, and let's just get it done.
My line is for the next meeting, there'll be a resolution that we can vote on.
And there is two meetings? Is there one meeting in November or two?
That's our, that's one of our next items. December sixth, yes.
Should we all agree on five or seven?
I, I, yeah, so I, if we decide on that once we bring our applicants, you know, we might, present ten people.
The ordinance has to be specific, though.
I would suggest you make your resolution specific, and you could, but you could also revise it at the next meeting and approve it at the next meeting, too. If you decide you want to go a different route.
Is it a resolution or an ordinance?
You can do whatever you want to do. I would suggest you do your resolution rather than advertising an ordinance.
Yeah. Okay, so I think we're good with that. And I will find out if Darian has drafted anything and what's available. If she hasn't, we'll try to draw something out. So number five is the Lake County Sheriff Office audit of the Howie Police Department. The auditor is not here. I wanted to make sure that everybody had access to that audit. And if we would like it to be presented or gone through in detail, we have that option. I can call the officer, and he will come and, and present all of the findings to us. And I, I was quite pleased with the audit. There were a couple of findings. But at the end, he basically said, you know, I think you should go for accreditation. So I thought that was a fine endorsement of the.
Don't forget.
He said that was the next step.
Don't forget the new facility was in there.
Yes, the new facility was in there. There was a question for the new facility.
And you have a copy of that? And you have a copy of that?
It was online.
Okay.
The audit was online, so it's here.
Okay, thanks.
So please take a look at that, it's a very, I thought it was quite a good audit. And please let me know if you'd like me to invite the officer to the next meeting, you know, when we are looking at his items. Okay, number six, number is the November and December town council meeting dates. We have conflicts with the first one, it's Veterans Day on November 14, and we have been known to have a meeting on the Tuesday, it's 11, sorry. Can't do anything without your phone, so you stay free. Should we skip it, or do we have enough to, because the 11th is Veterans Day, and then the 25th is Thanksgiving week.
I think we have, have it, I think a good recommendation is to do that.
The Tuesday? So can everybody be here on November 12th, the Tuesday, for the meeting?
I can.
Councillor Meadle, can you be here?
That's fine, then we remove Thanksgiving to...
The, well, we have to just decide if we're going to have that one or not. So we've decided, is that true?
I'm fine with Tuesday. Can we wait to Tuesday to see which businesses we get done at that meeting, to see at that point if we have to move to Thanksgiving?
We can.
Mayor, I will have a conflict, and we'll not be able to send anybody else either. We have Wyndham Aaron pass a tool that night.
On Tuesday?
Yes.
Your calendar, your calendar is wrong.
I'm being messed up.
It's the wrong year.
It's 2019.
So what do we defer, we currently have on Tuesday, we have the bishops, we decided we were going to look at the Bishop's Gate agreement.
We move to the 18th, that way legal's there, everybody's there, and it's the one meeting of the month, because of the following week is Thanksgiving, but, I mean, that's Monday, the 18th.
I can't.
Can't do it around.
19th.
And do you have?
When 19th, you work for?
19th, does the 19th?
19th works for Matt.
Mayor, Mr. De Paul, is the 19th okay for you?
I'm not going anywhere.
Okay.
You tell me, you whip up shit, there's a way out of the schedule, and I'll be here.
Okay, so we are going to then change the schedule for November to a single meeting on November 18th.
19th.
19th.
Tuesdays and 19th.
Because you can't be here on that 18th.
I'm here.
Okay, so the 19th is a good date.
Don't forget about the Bishop's Gate, you expect two weeks.
Yeah.
I'll wait for that.
Yes, we'll make sure. He just said let us know, because I did tell him earlier that we were going to discuss the date entirely. Now, do we want to, since we're here, looking at calendars, look at December as well? So the town council meeting would be the 9th, the Normal Town Council meeting, and then the second one is the 23rd.
We traditionally don't have the second one.
Second meeting in December, okay.
No, so the first one is what?
The 9th.
The 9th shouldn't be in anybody's travel.
Right.
The 23rd gets into...
Right. Okay, so we're going to go to a single meeting in December as well, on the 9th.
All right.
Yeah, the change went to.
Which was a normal meeting, anyway.
Yes.
Yeah, that's an ordinary, and we're just planning to make it a bond that needs today, to get everything done that needs today. December not being that day of the year.
Right.
That makes sense, right?
Okay, so we're going for the 19th of November and the 9th of December. Number seven is the discussion and approval to accept our financial audit, and, is she here? Oh, and so she has had a previous appointment and is going to get here as soon as she can. And she said probably between 6:45 and 7:00.
So just push it off until she gets here?
Yeah. We've been juggling today.
We're going to the audit.
So the town hall report.
I'm going to discuss that, because the only thing on the town hall report is the Christmas festival, and so when that time comes, I'll get up and talk.
It's now.
It's here. Francis O'Keefe Wagler, 409 West Central Avenue. The only thing on the town hall report is the Christmas festival, which is the Friday, December 13th, and Saturday, December 14th. There will be more information about it in the Howie Tribune, so please open your Howie Tribune and read it. If you would like to be a crafter, a participant crafter, please fill out the form. Town Hall has the form.
Five bucks.
Thank you.
$30 so far.
Who's running up fines?
Mr. Department of Labor.
Well, you should have a copy, we've been, just, we've been pretty busy, still are pretty busy, you know, it's a lot of things. Just so you all are aware, we had a slick fall in front of the library over the weekend, they notified me late Sunday, so I had to also take the report, unfortunately, sorry. So I will get that report finalized, and bring it over tomorrow so we can submit to rent insurance, just in case.
Thank you. So there's no, we already heard from Mr. Ernest, the code enforcement is, we have not filled that position as of yet, so we're still looking for code enforcement. Tara is?
Are we getting the applications in right now? Do we advertise it?
We have advertised, it's out on the internet, in a couple of locations, and I know we extended it to include the villages and that area as well, in case we could get a retiree that was interested in the position, but we haven't had any applicants that have come through. They, I know that the responses were supposed to go to Darian, and so we might hear more when she comes back. Town Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, I was going to address, or give you a status on the Venetia deannexation, and then also address the First Amendment right memo that I gave, that I sent out. For the Venetia deannexation, we went ahead and confirmed that the qualified voters signed the petition, so the next step now is for the feasibility study to be done by the town. That has been started. We have, my partner, Tom Cloud, is handling this project for us, he is one of the best annexation, deannexation attorneys in the state of Florida, so he knows this stuff here. And one thing that I wanted to point out to everybody, I know there was, there have been some questions from Venetia folks about what happens if they deannex, and those things are all going to be addressed in feasibility study. So Tom Cloud has suggested, there was a statement that he prepared and said to you, Mayor, and I believe you sent it out, that you do not come up with or try to think about things that are going to happen in the future if the deannexation does occur, because we just don't have those facts right now. The facts will be addressed in feasibility study, so it would kind of be guessing at this point to give them answers and to commit to anything for the town.
I'm sure it depends on the size of the town, but to give you an idea of the size of our town, and how long this study would take.
Oh, we, the study is, you are allowed to, up to six months in the statute, but we have requested that it be done within 60 days or so.
I was asking what the study incorporates, I'm sorry.
The feasibility of not having the property within the town anymore. So it's going to be done by a woman who Tom has worked with in the past, she's a planner and an attorney, and she's very good.
Now, I know you said a lot of residents have questions, this is something new, new to us, new to me at least. Is it possible for the residents to have questions, maybe Venetia people, to send them in somewhere, to the people doing the site? Maybe they, this way, it's possibly can be answered in a report, if it matters to make it?
Sure, I think the most appropriate time to answer the questions will be when the report is done, but if you do have questions, we can, I mean, we can send them to the lady that's going to be preparing the report, but I think it's, it should, the report should be addressing the core questions that they do have.
Okay.
Why am I paying to tell people, huh, leave my town and stop paying taxes? Makes no sense to me at all.
Unfortunately, it's a requirement of the statute.
Okay.
So, but that doesn't mean that if a resident has a question about, what if they stay in the town, or can we work on this, can we work on that, I mean, those are just all town issues that should still be addressed. Anybody have any other questions on that?
No, I know the, Mr. Fran Wagler put a meeting together at the library, he brought Carrie Baker in, I know he answered a lot of questions, so the people that couldn't make that, Carrie, I'm sure he would make himself available, he's on the website, email or call him if you have any questions as far as your taxes, and he was very informative during that meeting.
Okay.
What happened to the county, if they revert to the county, if they deannex?
Can you fill up the mic, Mr. Wallace, can't hear you, sorry.
I believe this question was, would they revert to the county if the deannexation is successful, is that correct?
Yes.
And I believe that is what would happen, that it would?
That's correct. You're either in the county or out of the county. You're in, yes, you're either in the town or out of the town, exactly.
Yeah, I know you meant.
Right. Okay, and then the memo that I prepared and we circulated was a compilation of a couple folks at our firm, they did some research, and we have a couple First Amendment rights attorneys that we talked to about the process that occurred at the last meeting. You have, and the mayor addressed this at the last meeting, a very strong form of government, mayor form of government in the charter. And the town's charter, it provides that the mayor has the power to establish the agenda for town council meetings, to call special meetings of the town council, to attend and preside at all meetings of the town council, to be the head of town government for all purposes, to be the official spokesperson of the town, and to direct and supervise the administration, she is the boss of your employees, and to investigate the condition of the town and the town's department and offices. She is your chief executive officer and maintains order at all regular and special meetings of the council. And in her absence, the mayor pro tem, he is the one who maintains order at regular and special meetings. The mayor has decided, as part of her process of setting up the agenda, that she will establish the agenda by taking, suggested agenda items from the council, and there is no specific outline of this process anywhere, it's just, that is the process that the mayor is using There is no specific Supreme Court case which addresses when the free speech rights of elected officials in the context of open meeting law. There are some lower court cases that we looked at, and all of the cases do agree, and the judges did agree, that the one thing that a presiding officer at a meeting cannot do is viewpoint, is discriminate on someone's viewpoint. So for instance, if you're having a discussion about, say, Ron Frankenstein's contract, which we did, you can't say to someone, okay, you're not allowed to speak against it. Well, I'll hear from everybody that wants to speak against it, but not allowed to hear the other side. So that's viewpoint discrimination. But there is the ability of the presiding officer to treat, they do have to treat all councilors similarly, but they do have the ability to preside at the meeting and maintain decorum, and decide what is going to be discussed at the meeting that is pertinent to town business. So a couple of the things that I put in the memo that came from the case law that we reviewed were that the mayor, in this instance, and in all other instances, the presiding officer, whoever you call them, in open meeting situations, can require members of the town council to adhere to rules of decorum and define the discussions of the, to the purpose of the meeting. The mayor can call a counselor out of order for being disruptive and not addressing agenda items, they can prevent a counselor from speaking repetitively on a subject, they can prevent badgering, interruptions, and disregard for the rules of decorum, they can remind the counselor of a topic if he or she veers off of the topic, and give a counselor another opportunity to address that topic if she chooses, be proactive, actually, one of the things we suggest is that the mayor be proactive to stop angry emotions and disruptive actions, because that has the ability of higher, the end result of hijacking somebody else's ability to speak at a meeting. And in this instance, I know this council has used Roberts Rules of Order, and those are widely regarded by many courts in the, across the United States. And I did get a couple of questions, specific questions, on the memo. One being, how the mayor is able to select the agenda items. And I think that in this instance, everything basically that this council does, I mean, you can arguably say deals with town business, but you have to have a, an end goal about where you want to go to in a meeting, you need to have enough time to address specific items, and the items need to be pertinent to the town council business, not like to the powers of the mayor to be administratively in charge of employees. And then some other questions were, how can I get called out of order at a meeting? And again, that's just because the mayor needs to keep the topics in line, and she needs to keep the business moving forward. And then, if the mayor refuses to put my items on the agenda for town business, in this instance, you have a very strong mayor form of government, like we discussed, and there's two options, you can change your charter, or you can have somebody else run your town as the mayor. But along that line, the folks that I spoke with in my office who practice First Amendment rights and constitutional laws, said they listened to the recording of what happened last week, and were in agreement that the meeting was run efficiently and to the best of the mayor's ability. Yes.
Okay, thanks, Heather. When I got your memorandum here, I, before I got it, I actually gave you some case law, and I never got a response to it. And like you said, there's a lot of case law out there throughout the country, and a lot of case law in different states don't have what we have as far as the Florida, the sunshine law, so obviously, the rule's going to apply a little different there. So as far as you're saying that they thought the meeting was run properly, if you look at the items I was bringing up, and it specifically says, if you're talking about town business, like you just said, if there's an endgame to it, you can't be stopped. And the topics I was talking about had an endgame, and they were town business, and I was stopped. So if you, if your firm thought that was proper, I would love, if they would, just put in writing, and just state that, you know, you agreed on how that meeting was run, and that maybe particularly my rights weren't violated. Okay, I said, I sent you the, not the passage of agenda items, but all my agenda items had something to do with town business. They have an endgame, if they just address them, entertain them, we can move forward, and they won't be brought up again. So, and one of the questions I asked you, you cited a lot of things from the charter, the ordinances and policies, and I sent you an email, and it's the one you didn't return to me, which I, which is another issue I'm going to bring up, as far as you're addressing other councilmen and mayors, and emailing them and not even emailing me back. As far as establishing the agenda, you said, the mayor has determined that members of the town council should submit topics they wish to discuss at upcoming meetings. That's not written anywhere in the charter, that's not written anywhere in the ordinances. I'd like to know where you got that from. You're citing case law here, but it doesn't say anywhere in there that she can do that. I owe credit goes, in that case, the mayor determines during the meeting whether the topic is germane to town business. Once again, we got to be very careful there, because we can't infringe on the councilman's right, we do represent our constituents, they do have concerns, and everything I've brought up is town business. So to call me out of order, when I, when I got the floor, we talk about Roberts Rules, councilman's comments, and that's acceptable. Call me out of order when I'm talking about town business, that's, that's unacceptable. And for you to, instead of addressing the problem, it seems like you're trying to cover up for wrongdoing. And I just wish you'd be a little more fair with it. Like I said, I've seen the emails back and forth, and not returning my emails is a fair sign to me that you're not playing favoritism, but taking care of someone more than others in the council.
Councilman, I have emailed you more than any counselor.
Okay.
Or the mayor, and I have all the public records to show that.
Okay.
So respectfully, that is not correct, and you did give me two cases, one was a 1966 Supreme Court case, which dealt with a House of Representative person who gave, I've read all of these cases, who gave a interview, before they were even seated, on a phone, to a reporter, and that reporter took the interview, gave it to the person who was going to seat the House of Representative person, and that person did not, and this person was even, I mean, this was a very antiquated case, the person did not get seated and sued.
Okay.
So it has nothing, I mean, the context is completely different, and when you look at First Amendment rights, you have to look at the actual context of the forum, you cannot just find cases.
I agree.
And I respectfully read all of your cases, the two cases that you sent.
Okay.
They did not admit.
Essentially, they did, the open mouth, open meeting case for Ohio that did fit, it specifically states there, an elected official, you have to treat his rights the same as a citizen, and they talk about the meeting. I sent that, I actually, I wrote, I wrote not only the case law, but I put the sections in there, that state. So you're picking apart certain areas that might benefit the mayor, but you got to read the whole case, and you don't. So, but with this, I asked you, where you got this from? And you don't?
And I answered the question, I said, that comes from the powers that are derived from the mayor. Your charter is not a procedural manual, you have to have some powers derived.
Okay.
Such as the fact that the mayor is the boss of all employees in this town.
We're not employees, are we?
No, 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 I know that, but I'm just saying, in the charter, it specifically says the mayor is the administrative head of all the employees in this town, so she oversees all the employees. So it's not a, it's not a procedural manual on how to do things, but she has to come up with the way to her process.
Sure, and I agree to that, but when someone, a council member, had... But when someone in a council member has an item, a town item to bring up, town business, a report, whatever you want to call it, you're saying she can look at that town business and determine its business, but it's not germane enough to bring it up, but it's town business. So if you have people addressing issues to certain council members and they want to vote over the council meeting, you're saying the mayor can stop that councilman from bringing that up? No, they can't. They can't. So please, like you said, you didn't say anywhere in here, and I highlight these areas where she can determine that. You point out the other areas where she can do it. The charter, ordinance, but you didn't put anywhere in there where she can do that.
We agree. That is the process the mayor has come up with.
Thank you. So she came up with it. There's no law on it. There's no, there's no process, Roberts Rule's nothing. She decided on her own to come up with that process, correct? That's a problem. I can't, it's sad that you don't see that, the problem, as our attorney. And I wish you'd start representing us all equally.
Counselor McGill.
Thank you.
Counselor McGill, if I don't agree with you?
I'm fine with that. You'll agree with me. But treat me the same.
Please, everybody.
And I, like I pointed out to you.
Counselor McGill, I think you've made your point.
Okay.
Okay. Mayor Protown, come on.
I didn't have anything on my agenda, so.
Counselor McGill?
Yes, you know, Mayor, I got your email forwarded by, from Rebecca about the certain items. What I'm going to do is, I'm not going to talk about them. I'm just going to say that I want to talk about this, but I'm going to give you the email and give you an opportunity to address it. I'll send you an email along with Heather. And then we'll go from there. Is that fair enough?
Yeah, I just needed more information about the scope of what you were.
Yeah, and I got it today and it was like last minute and the meeting.
Actually, yes, that was my issue. I had it in my drafts and had never sent send and I apologize.
No problem. That's why I had no problem sending you the email and then if we can address it between then and the next meeting.
Yes.
I'll be satisfied with that and we'll move on. We talked about the Strong Town Mayor Charter.
So you're seeing that in the charter review process?
Yeah, yeah. The next thing is the Mayor Protown and, you know, the town charter and ordinances and how it spells out the responsibilities and is it, I mean, I know I was told in the past, and actually when Mayor Nevel became mayor and we're giving out the responsibilities, and one of the things I wanted to do was meet with the department heads, but I was told it was Mayor Protown's responsibility. So would you address that?
Yes.
Thank you.
I sort of always found it ironic that the mayor wasn't the person meeting with the department heads since I'm responsible for the administration and they report to the mayor. The mayor, me, at this point. So I took copious notes and provided the information and still a lot of things spelt through the graphs. So when I became interim mayor, I discussed with the department heads whether, what they thought about me retaining the department head meeting so that I could really understand and continue to have the information to manage the activities within the town. And so I think that ongoing, it would be hoof the town for me to continue to be at that meeting. I'm still taking copious notes that are shared with everyone. The previous mayor had a full-time job and I think that was one of the components of it being part of the Mayor Protown function. When I became Mayor Protown, I got a call from Mr. Nevel, who I don't think wanted to do it anymore. And so that's why I thought it was a function of the Mayor Protown seat.
Okay. Because I just want to make sure, I know Mr. Conway travels a lot, as I do, and it wasn't a fact that he couldn't attend it because he was traveling and that's why you're taking it over?
No.
Okay. We were talking about the raises back and forth with the councilman. They talked about why councilman got a certain amount and the Mayor Protown, that one of the main reasons was because they're obligated to meet with the department head. So it's an extra meeting, extra meetings throughout the month they have to.
That's a very good point.
So are we going to adjust that because he's not meeting with them anymore because that was the reason why they got a little extra more money?
It is probably a valid point.
I have no problem with it.
Yeah.
So I moved, I think if there's any costs to the, to the.
Charter review.
Charter review, so it should be, because there may be.
There you go.
Label costs that I'm quite willing to have all councilmen turn in their paychecks.
Great. So we can get back to the next meeting, I'll put that on the list to look at the salaries and also understand if we can, we'll reach out to the supervisor of elections to understand the components of the expense that we may incur depending on how we handle the referendum for the charter.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. The, I mentioned on here, the attorney contract. It's actually, a lot of the contracts within the town, Tom.
Town plan.
Town plan, thank you. How often do we put that out for a, for bid or how often do we address that? I know they're yearly contracts. I know Heather's contract, she gave me hers at the beginning of the year when I asked for it. I think that was drawn up in 2008.
For real, you serve with the pleasure. I serve with the pleasure of the council, or Gray Robinson does.
Yeah, so, I mean, I know a lot of councils address these contracts, so I have contractors outside. And as far as I've been here, I haven't heard anything as far as when the RFPs out for Tom or whoever.
Right. I, I do not believe that we do the RFPs as regularly, but I do believe that we do a bi-annual, every other year, review of the contracts to confirm the necessity that the, all of the skillsets are available, that the contractor wants to continue serving the town. So I will contact Darian or when she comes back in, we'll look at the calendar and see when those last reviews were.
Yeah, I know this was brought up at the beginning of the year when I got Heather's contract and other contracts. And I thought it was important just to show the people that we're not just sticking with the same company and not revisiting their contract or looking at other options and, you know, it's also important with this latest budget we had and raising our budget $108,000 and with the latest audit report and the way we got, we got scolded in that report as far as the way we handled town business. I just thought it was important to start, start looking up different contracts throughout, from Heather on over. So maybe it's something we can address. I mean, last year, I think they brought up, or the year before, they brought up towards the end of the year.
Yes, actually it was, it was Mayor Sears at that time.
Yeah, yeah.
They talked about the review of the contract and the continuation of it, the skillsets, the knowledge of the town. There were several things to look at, including the price, the cost.
Yeah, so it's hopefully, like you said, I'm bringing it up. I don't want to keep bringing it up. Can we address this or can you address this?
Yeah, like I said, I'm going to talk to Darian about the review of the town contracts, see when the last review's first.
And you can let, okay, rather than me bringing it up.
Yeah, I'll just add it to the.
Okay.
Agenda for November 19.
Okay. I put the golf carts on there. About state laws and Heather sent me an email, has to get a little more specific on it. And once again, there's some complaints in Venezia that were being stopped by a female officer and one of the complaints was they were stopped because they had kids in a golf cart. And the officer said, I don't think this is legal. So he might not want to do it and went on her way. And after that happened, I guess it got around the community, they were concerned that that occurred. So I believe one of the residents met or talked with Chief Thomas about it. And I think there's a misunderstanding in the laws because I believe the resident was told in order to operate a golf cart, you have to have a driver's license or at least be old enough to have a driver's license and that's not true.
Right.
So they were told that.
Do you have some details on that for Chief Thomas?
I do, of course. I've never spoken to nobody in Venezia about the golf cart.
Perry Davis?
Never talked to Perry Davis, and I recall. Oh, he talked about exiting out the back at another business.
Yeah, that was an exit.
Okay.
That's number one. Number two, the officer didn't stop an individual, they encountered them at the park and the young lady was holding an infant on her lap. The officer didn't feel that was appropriate. The young lady and her other children, other female, left and then they went back where they came from. Number two, the officer didn't know they were from Venezia until after the conversation. So we're not targeting Venezia residents. I resent that statement.
I didn't say targeting. I didn't say targeting.
So we did some more investigation, Chief Thomas, you had to.
Yes, great. I'm sorry. There are quite a few statutes that apply to golf carts. You can't read one, there's multiple. You have to crisscross between several. Mr. McGill's right, it does not require a driver's license, providing the town has met 316, 212, I think the statute is, which means to a golf cart friendly community, that a driver's license is exempt. That's correct. The problem we have, if you read our ordinance, our ordinance is way out of whack. It doesn't match the state law now. We need to go back and revamp the ordinance. There are several inconsistencies in the ordinance.
Okay.
So my recommendation is we need to go back, review the ordinance to match the laws.
Look at the current state statutes and go from there.
And I have done quite a bit of research on this today. We actually, thank you Ms. Ramos, we did find a new, well, a newer Attorney General's opinion on regarding golf carts and child restraints and et cetera. Unfortunately, I didn't get to read that 100% before I came.
I haven't read any of it either.
Okay.
So if it's okay with you, we can have time to read this and.
Yes, absolutely. And come back with some sort of a recommendation for the revision of the ordinance so that our ordinance matches the state statutes.
Okay. I appreciate that because, and then obviously there was disagreement that he didn't talk to Perry. So I'm going to have Perry Davis, if it's okay, contact you and say exactly what was said between them.
Perry Davis did talk to us about being able to egress through the back with the golf carts.
I'm just saying, he, concern came to me that he also said the kids or young adults couldn't be on it and you had to have a driver's license and.
But I don't think Chief Thomas has included in that.
Once again, that's something he said, I'll have him contact you just to confirm it.
That'd be great.
Yeah, so.
I would like just to refresh one thing. In Mr. McGill's original email, he says targeting. We are not targeting the residents of Venezia. I would like to make that clear.
Thank you. That clarification.
Okay.
Next, state law and pensions.
Yes. After the last.
Mr. McGill, you accept a comment?
What's that?
Would you accept a comment?
I always do.
I'm trying to be.
Anytime during my, for the record, anytime during my councilman comments.
To the town itself.
You can speak.
I think it'd be, a lot of times, somebody brings a councilman a problem, they should be encouraged to talk to the department head or the mayor because they don't operate under sunshine. And then when it always comes up through a counselor, it seems like it, it's not as authentic as, you know, somebody told me, because I have people tell me stuff all the time and you have to say, well, if you really feel strongly about it, then you should really go to the mayor. Because we do, sunshine kind of cripples us in terms of transmitting, you can't talk to the mayor per se without a meeting anyway. So my point is that we should encourage if our constituents have an issue, they should be willing to put their name on it, write it down, and then, then we have something written from a constituent rather than, and the concert can be copied on, I, you know, I'm not trying to restrain anything, but it just opens up the communication, in my opinion, much better than simply always passing something to a councilman. Because that's the first thing I ask somebody. Well, have you talked to the mayor? Have you talked to the chief? And then, and the only problem you ever get burned is they dropped, somebody dropped the ball. I'm not saying you dropped the ball, but I, just a comment.
Okay, and I appreciate that. And it's, I just don't want to discourage the residents from approaching any of us because we should all be available to them to answer their questions.
Yes.
No.
Only that they really have a concern.
But we can.
To drive to get to the correct person.
Sure.
Where our town runs.
But they approach any of us and they might feel more comfortable with one than the other. And they might feel comfortable approaching one of us rather than the department head because they might not want retaliation or, and they might want to remain anonymous. You know, it'd always be nice to have someone.
I feel like anonymous myself.
Oh, and so do I.
I don't think you do either.
No.
I know you don't.
Yeah, so, but we should, people have that right though. So, but even if they do report it to us, we can always forward it to Mayor McFarland and just obviously do not reply to the email like we always do at the recommendation of our attorney, so.
Yes, and the more information, the better. So that, these are lessons learned, right? So when we have a resident who has an issue, we do due diligence, look up the state statutes, look up the conflict in the ordinances and do documentation. If we have that and we have that documentation, in the future, if the same thing happens, we are then able to draw on that knowledge and not redo everything every time. So that is key to our success. Being as small as we are and as limited on staff and resources, it's very key for us to make sure that we maintain that sort of documentation and line of responsibility, information logic.
And with the golf carts, I guess Darian's still working on, waiting for a response, so.
Yes, the FDOT has not gotten back to us on the variance yet.
I emailed the guy, I kept his number just to get it. And he said they're still working on it. And so I figured.
We're shooting for Christmas.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You get the ordinance back, you know.
Yeah.
Do you mind if I speak on this?
What? No, like you said.
My biggest thing with this whole thing is I don't know what was said, what wasn't said, but when you have an officer thinking they know the law instead of knowing the law, that's a problem. If you don't say something to somebody unless you know the law, because that's just going to get you in trouble.
Right.
I don't know who it was, I don't care who it was, I said, it's the chief to handle and take care of, but it's not a fact of, I think.
That is, again, a very good point, that the chief will be able to take back not only to that officer, but all of his staff. So it's a very good point.
Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation. I've know, I brought this up the last couple of meetings and to save time for me bringing it up. And it's about the chief's 11 offenses. If you are investigating and you're addressing on paper, you can, once something's done, you can update the council via email. There's nothing wrong with that. I think we should all, we're all entitled to be informed and keep up to date on what's going on. This way also, I'll keep on coming here and asking you, what's the latest and what's going on and so.
I am addressing them, the audit, which one component of that. And my objective is to put these to rest. As the, many of them were administrative and I address them. And so the last couple that I have will be reported on. Some of them are not appropriate to come back and be reported on because they are administrative functions of the town, deal with confidentiality of information and personnel in our personnel policy.
So how does the council members find out as far as what's going on, as far as? I'd like to pose that to Heather, as far as are we entitled to know what's going on? As far as the investigation, what's going on and information?
I would think we need to wait and see what the mayor, what the mayor does. And I don't know the answer to the question because I don't know what the results is.
Okay, I just, the question is, are we entitled to be informed where we're at as far as the offenses, the investigation, if there's any dispositions? I sent you an email and I never got a response.
Because I didn't have an answer.
Okay, so we must have an answer for it. And I think, like I said, I'm the one to type them up and there's certain people that victim, witnesses, whatever, haven't been interviewed. And they're even asking, is it going on? We have been interviewed, you know, when you conduct an investigation, if you look at the email that Deborah, is it LaFour? She sent, saying what she would estimate if she investigated it. Anywhere from $5,000 to $9,000 it would cost the town for that, or for Debbie and whoever to investigate it. And, because you have to interview people, you have to take statements, so.
So I am looking at them all. I have put several of them to bed. They were administrative functions and with the personnel directly. There are a couple that I'm still working on and I will, that are appropriate to report back on and I will make sure that that happens.
Okay. Like I said, I figured I'd make a recommendation with the emails. I don't, like I said, I don't think there's anything wrong with letting us know what's going on.
All right.
And then the other thing was the George Brown on a May 7th. You said, you acknowledged that you got the, the four sheets, the forms, summertime sheets, form of vacation sheets, whatever.
Right. So at that point, the instruction from the mayor was that the police handle their comp time internally. And so they, they have comp time for when they go to the courthouse, et cetera. So there's many of those. And so the conflicts that you reported, we went back and looked at the time sheets and at that time I talked to Officer. And so they have comp time for when they go to the courthouse, et cetera. So there's many of those. And so the conflicts that you reported, we went back and looked at the time sheets and at that time I talked to Officer Roman was the one, is that correct? He was keeping track of the comp time in a... It was official, but it was not documented well. I don't know exactly how to say that. He knew exactly what the comp time was, but it wasn't reflected on the time sheets as comp time in some places. Sometimes they knew they had four hours of comp time and so they worked five hours and reported nine. And so that is something that the chief and I have talked about rectifying so that comp time is identified as comp time, not only in the log where they have a running total of it, but so when they fill out their time sheets, it specifically says hours worked, comp time, so that we know the differentiation between the two.
Yeah, I want to put this to bed. So let's, I just want to make it clear, the four time sheets, the one, I know the four, the one time sheet they submitted, which has been, we've been criticized by auditors that they had to put the times exactly how they worked and they only put eight hours or 12 hours.
That is, that is actually an audit finding, right? We actually have to change all of our time sheets to do that because all of our hourly workers, not only our police staff, but the town hall staff, et cetera, should be identifying the dates and times.
But this has been going on and I know Mayor Sears warned the police department that they had to start doing that when he was mayor and they still aren't. So it's, the reason I bring it up is the time sheet showed 12 hours that he got paid for. And if you look at all the time sheets throughout the year, that's where they indicate comp time and no comp time was indicated on there.
Right. And it was an error of omission, absolutely.
But then he got, his police log said he worked eight, seven, eight hours.
Yes.
And then another sheet showed he was on vacation.
Right.
And then, and then he taught at the academy for seven hours, so...
And this is something that you've brought up before and so we, we do have the background on it. And like I said, I'm working with the chief to make sure that the time sheets are adjusted and delineated. We haven't done it. We are looking at the new fiscal year component and how to get that addressed.
I appreciate it. Like I said, I just, I want to put this to bed and I appreciate the information you gave me. The residents slandering council members, are you sending an email on that?
Great.
Is that fine? I think that was one of your questions. The false statements made, did you ask on, in more detail? I think it put two dates, September 23rd meeting and October 14th. At that meeting, I asked you if anything was, any disposition was on any offenses. You said none was done. Nothing was concluded at that time.
I listened to the meetings. I did not recall hearing that.
Yeah.
No work is... Well...
The reason why I say it because there's an email between you and Heather saying that you can disregard offense number 10. I'm gonna put a letter in the chief's file.
Yes.
But I, when I asked you, you said nothing was done at that time.
I'm still working with Darian. She is out and so she and I have got to sit down and work through...
So that's, so that's not number 10? Okay.
Yeah.
The email said that if I want to bring it up.
I'm still working on that, like I said.
Okay.
All of the...
So, the inappropriate email regarding violation rights, I sent out an email and I figured we're gonna address it that way, so I'm not gonna bring it up like I promised you. We talked about the building inspector, the timeline, First Amendment rights. Like I said, I'll address it in the email for you.
Great.
And then we can hopefully address it the next meeting, put that to bed. The Larry Chester and, well, people are asking, you know Lieutenant Roman's old car? It's being taken home. And, you know, we talked about the budget and the spending, extra money and all that and they're asking who's taking it home. I'm assuming Larry Chester is.
Yeah.
With him being a part-time, temporary police officer, taking home police car, and someone saying, I don't know, I'm not sure, he was 25, 30 minutes away, back and forth. Is this a common practice? Are we allowing part-time officers to bring our township cars home?
I'll look into it. We have previously done that. He is doing a lot of work as lieutenant as far as the, some of the administrative functions because we are currently one full-time police officer down and three reservists, is that correct, Chief Thomas? So it is appropriate at this time for him to be able to have that car and utilize it because he is filling in and providing backup as, for the administrative function.
Okay. So you know about it?
Yes.
Did you get permission, I guess, in writing?
No, not on the...
Okay. Because the ordinance says it has to be in writing from the mayor. Our laws say it has to be in writing.
We'll do that.
So, thank you. The slandering, I told you, I emailed you on, update on the Don Ellis. And the new information was, and I, at the last time, I mentioned that you went to the sheriff's department, we addressed it. Just found out after you went, Conroy went down there to try to reopen a case against Mr. Ellis about the false report and they wouldn't even open it. They said, no, we're not opening this, we're not even gonna entertain it.
Okay, good.
So just, I don't know if you're aware that Mr. Conroy went down and also gave a statement against Mr. Ellis and the sheriff's department.
I wouldn't know that, so...
You're the mayor, I figured you would, you went to that.
You stand corrected. I didn't ask them to open it at all.
I said they didn't open it. I didn't say you asked.
Oh, okay.
No, they didn't, no. No, you went down four days after the, three days after the September meeting.
And I am not a part of a corrupt Howie government.
I didn't...
And you attacked both the mayor and myself in emails and on postings. And I would like an apology that I simply did my job and...
How did you do your job? Well, I'm...
May I? Okay.
No. You can't. Thank you.
Can't challenge your honesty?
Honesty? Matter of fact, I'll read the emails for you. I'll read them aloud to the public if you want because they're dead on. It's so obvious what you're doing, Mr. Conroy. I see all the emails. You see all the emails between the chief, you, Martha Neebel, nothing to John Scott or I. We're always being left out. It's the three of you. So how are you defending that? So I'm simply saying...
I get an email and I send it to Rick and I say, for your information.
I'm simply saying, Mr. Conroy, that you went down after Martha went down, I'm sorry, Mayor McFarland, and tried to sway the sheriff's department because why else would you go down there and give a statement?
May I read my statement?
Rather than...
Mayor, may I read my statement?
Yes, he can, so he finishes. Rather than looking into the allegation on him making a false police report against an 83-year-old man, rather than doing that, you went down and tried to go against Mr. Ellis. But read your statement.
Okay. You keep using the word false and nowhere in the sheriff's report was it false. However, the statement, after I heard that Martha had a similar situation, I called the officer and I said I would like to make a statement about Mr. Ellis based upon Mr. Ellis visiting my house in November 2018's post-election. Shortly after the election, Mr. Don Ellis came to my home, not to congratulate me, that he ran against me, if you people maybe don't call that, but to further discuss the stalking incident of Mr. Ellis's granddaughter that occurred approximately, I think it was 4/4/18, five, six months earlier, and to complain about Chief Thomas's action at the time. He reviewed his version, Mr. Ellis reviewed his version of the alleged stalking and said the chief should have stopped this guy under some pretense to find out what he was doing in our... I had already talked, I had been previously informed of the incident and I had asked the chief one simple question. I think everyone in the audience would ask a chief or a councilman the same question. The chief, did you follow the law? Chief is not allowed to choose which laws, hopefully, he wants to enforce. The chief replied that he followed the law. Mr. Ellis replied, he did not care that the chief followed the law, that he was a law officer, that when he was a law officer, and by the way, he was in Orlando, I know it's Orlando or Orange County. That his philosophy, you do as a policeman whatever it takes. And by the way, my wife overheard parts of this conversation, so she's my witness. Had he taken the law in his hand, and that he had actually taken the law in his hands at times when he was on duty in Orlando. He said he knew that I was in support of the chief, but he, Don Ellis, was out to get the chief and was not satisfied how this incident was handled. I told him the chief followed the law, that's all I could ask. Mr. Chief, Mr. Ellis proceeded to angrily leave my house and left saying I was stupid. As later in another email, Mr. McGill, as challenging the integrity and honest of Mayor Martha McFarland, I found it very disrespectful and dishonest on the part of Mr. McGill. Am I too making up a story about a witness other than myself? I think not. It's come to my attention, even the FBL report Mr. McGill had filed against the chief without the mayor or the council's knowledge, which he wants denied. He stated the FBL was aware that Mr. Ellis was following the chief. Finally, to all the, to all of you... Finally, to all of you who saw or listen to Mr. McGill read offense number 11, the sheriff's department once again found all the claims unsubstantiated, in their words. I'd say that is a far cry from Mr. McGill's statement. The chief filed a false police report. In fact, the sheriff's department advised that the alleged stalking was not a, was a misdemeanor stalking perhaps, and if it was a misdemeanor, it should be pursued by the state attorney's office and that it was not a felony offense. So with that, I left it and I simply did my civic duty because I've had other neighbors tell me other stories about Mr. Ellis's, whether he was stalking or not stalking, or whether he was just kind of following the police chief, which was one before. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to make you aware that, I don't know if you knew that this report was sent or if they were sent to the sheriff's department. The other thing is the police study that we brought up for the sheriff's department.
That is the audit. If you look at the audit in there, read that through. It actually talks to several of your components.
Yeah, but when I asked for the study, when you get a cost to see, to cover the town, that's what I'm talking about.
I'm sorry.
No problem. And I, when I, we had a last budget meeting and I said, right at the budget meeting, I listened to it again, when Mayor Neebel, was it Mayor Neebel at the time? Yeah. Said that get in writing. And at that meeting, I said, yes, I'll go down to the sheriff's department and get a quote or a study, whatever, just so we have an idea with the base on. So we were all aware of it. And then I actually, that last meeting, because sheriff wasn't emailing me back that you've been in contact or the sheriff contacted you.
I sent you the email. It was actually the sheriff that reached out to us, to Chief Thomas, to make him aware that you had...
Yeah, I knew that because you made it, the meeting said he reached out to you and I knew that he...
No, I said we received a notification. But anyway, I listened to it today and that is my recollection.
Okay. Yeah, can we...
I am, I had said at that point that we would do an internal impact analysis so that we would know what to ask for. And that is something that has to be done with everything that we've got going on right now. I don't know if it can be done immediately, but we really do need to look at what are we gonna ask for? Are we asking for, you know, six officers to daytime, to nighttime? Are we looking, are we going to do what Miniola does with outfitting all of them? Are they gonna be here? Are they gonna just be patrollers? You know, what exactly do we need? And when we do do that, then we can determine the feasibility. You said that the sheriff had told you that he could do it for less, I believe you said?
What's that? No, he gave an example. He said what you need is at least one officer during the day and he's recommending two officers at night. Currently, we only have one, but he's saying for officer's safety, he's recommending two.
Right.
But with that study, it's not gonna cost anything. So he can come up with a number to show exactly, he'll do his own study as far as what we need, the manpower, how much it's gonna cost, and he just presented to us. It's not a cost of time, so we have an idea.
When I saw him at the Florida League of Cities luncheon, he actually said to me that he didn't think he could do it for what we were currently paying. And so, again, I would, I would like to determine what our current needs are. We have a police force that supplies us with not only the patrolling, which the sheriff's office doesn't really like to patrol right there.
Yeah, well, yeah.
And they patrol, they provide services like looking at houses while people are on vacation, they do check-in on our older citizens, they do many, many things that we are so lucky to have a small town and a police force that provides us with these other services.
Sure, I just want to give those residents an option to show them and that when I talked to the sheriff, he was more than willing to give the study. He said, listen, you got a question on, we'll do it, this way you have an idea.
But what are we asking for? That's my concern.
What's that?
I wanted to ask apples half.
Yes, and I told him that. I said, what do you provide Miniola? They have their own station there, I think it's 14 guys. I think their cost was like 1.39 million, 390 million, 1.3 million, something like that. Mind you...
It's Miniola.
It's Miniola.
Right.
Yeah, so and he said, and he said, you're not even a third of what you would need in your town for Miniola.
Right.
So...
The cost that was of concern to me is the $120,000 to outfit a deputy when they come in because that's what the...
What was the number?
120,000.
I was told 65, but okay.
Okay. Well, you know, I have to go back and look. Now that I've said that out loud, I could be, I could be...
That's what I'm saying, if we had it in front of us from the sheriff, we wouldn't be like guessing or speculating or...
Right. But I do want to know what we want to ask for because, just because they come back and say to us, we would provide this, this is what we think you need, I am hesitant to do that.
And I would say to them, what we want is what we have right now. Can you match it? Can you save us money?
Why don't we tell them what we have? That's why we need an impact study to outline exactly what we have.
He's the sheriff of this county, you know, he's the head law enforcement agent. He knows what we have and what we do. He sees a call volumes, UCR reports, they know exactly, you know, what we need here.
I don't, I don't think he sees the, we check on Ms. Romano at the bottom of Magnolia every day to make sure that she's ambulatory and that's what our town is. That's the basic neighborly community that we are. And I want to make sure that we continue that and have that in our scope and focus as well, so...
Are we gonna give them an answer though?
Give who an answer?
The attorney for Lake County Sheriff's Department going back and forth with Heather.
Well, it was one email.
Yep, yes, I talked to him on the phone and he had said, I had asked for some follow-up information from the mayor because I got an email out of the blue from the attorney saying, hey, do you have time to talk? And I said, I have no idea what this is about. So I asked the mayor what it was about and, and the county's position is they don't want to get into town's business until the town is ready for them to.
Yes, and that's why they're waiting to see...
They want a consensus from the town council first.
Yes.
So you wanna...
I want to understand what we're gonna ask for and then come back and agree that that's what we're gonna ask for, that's the scope of the work that we want them to bid on and then go forward with that.
Basically, full coverage for the town, patrolling the town, not just showing up because a call had occurred. And basically, the services we have now, how much it would have cost.
Do we supply the cars? Do they supply the cars?
They supply cars.
Do we supply the vests? But they don't.
But they tell you all that though. When you, but they do.
I think that's what they want to know when we ask them for a bid. They want, they're going to come back to us and say, do you want to supply the cars or do you want us to supply the cars? Like they do in Miniola, Miniola supplies the cars.
Okay.
Miniola supplies the vests, Miniola supplies the body cams, you know, and so are we asking for them to do that or are we going to continue to do that on our own?
Yeah.
And, and outfit those and then are those our deputies? Are they designated for Howie so that every day we see John Smith and we know John Smith is our guy? We don't see John Smith and then Joe Blow and then Harry, you know.
And everything you're asking, help or not? Always do is say, yeah, let's, we have nothing to lose to show, they may, they may be more. We have nothing to lose by asking.
I've just given you a bunch of options and you said, yes, they'll, they'll do it all.
They'll answer that for us. So it's, and then we'll see on paper exactly what we get. If we get the paper cars, the vests, guns, whatever it may be, we'll, we'll see. So I just, I guess we have nothing to lose. We owe it to the residents to complain about the taxes, how high they are to bill rate and the cost of the police department. At least we can show them what it's going to cost if we have Lake County Sheriff's Department. It, it can't hurt. So hopefully, maybe next meeting, you can think about it.
Yeah.
I know, but it's the simple, as I said, give them a call, email saying, yeah, go forward, come up with something. So, we talked about de-annexation. Hopefully, maybe, I know the residents were asking why it wasn't, a couple of them asked why it wasn't on the agenda because it's a pretty important item and thank you for bringing it up. Maybe in the future, if we talk about it.
Sure.
We can put it on there so they can see.
I can ask them or tell the mayor or ask the mayor if she can put my items on there so everyone knows.
Especially that item, because so.
Absolutely, and I'll probably give an update on it frequently.
Yeah, maybe for them, you know, because like you said, there's a lot of.
It's completely unfair fairness to the residents. I agree.
See, there's a lot of questions out there and need to be answered, so that's it.
Counselor Scott, you didn't have anything, but do you have anything?
I didn't, well, I didn't want Tom to come here all the way from Villishe County and charge us for, I know he doesn't charge us to come here, but he does charge us for his time to talk about the sidewalk that he was talking with the state about.
The FDOT has not gotten back to us yet on that and it also is not on the MPO plan yet. We had done the bicycle study and in the, the, yeah, we had talked about making our sidewalks ADA compliant, providing on-ramps and connecting the sidewalks to the edges of the road. That's all FDOT right of way and responsibility. And it is the same with the discussion that we had for the facade changes in the building, that that's FDOT sidewalk there and right of way. And we've got to understand whether they are going to actually entertain that or not. I know that they had said that they may be able to do the connector sidewalks, the study for this connector sidewalk from Venezia to the sidewalk in front of the.
Lakeview.
Yes, to Lakeview, thank you. But we still haven't gotten any word back from them at all.
I didn't, I didn't want him to come here and just tell us, no, we didn't, we don't have nothing.
Yes, well, thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, we are done. Oh, April, I'm so sorry, you're here. So April, if you'll just introduce yourself to everybody and then if you'll go through it and brief.
Hi, I'm April Schilling, partner with CRI, in charge of your financial statement audit. It sounds like you had a couple audits to talk about tonight. And I think you all have a copy, a bound copy of the financial statements. I can go into as much painful detail on the numbers or as little as you prefer. The key things that you really want to know is.
Yes, the key.
It was a clean audit. We were able to give a clean opinion, which means we were able to say that the numbers presented in these financial statements are materially correct. There are no material misstatements. We have reasonable assurance. So auditing has lots of wiggle words, but basically, these are numbers that you can rely on as the accurate numbers for the town for the year ended September 30th, 2018. We did have a number of findings this year, mainly internal controls that we thought could be improved. We are required to actually look at all of your controls and all your significant processes and let you know as governance when we think there are some improvements that could be made. We do understand that we do a lot of small towns and smaller counties and when you have a very limited number of fiscal staff, it's very common that the cost benefit of a control may not be there to implement it. We stop to say it's that there's a control deficiency, but a lot of towns will decide that it's just not cost benefit to hire three extra people to double check everyone's work. So I'm happy to go through those findings if you'd like, but it's not required. It's purely at the pleasure of the commission.
So I have read through these. I don't really need any more detail on the findings.
I just had a couple of questions with some of the findings.
Go ahead.
Yeah, seriously. You talk about, I know a couple of things that you're looking at past, so it's, we're repeat offenders on a lot of things. And a lot of it has to do with training and is there, but you don't come up, and I don't think it's your job, recommendations as far as how we can overcome that obstacle as far as, because it's the same thing over and over, so.
So if I, I can, happy to respond to that. Right now, you have a town clerk who is primarily responsible for everything. And so the finances are a very small part of her daily duties. And then you have a very, very part-time accounting person, Russ, who is here.
Twelve hours, Monday.
Yeah, very, very, very limited time, which, you know, there's, there's really just so much people can do when you don't really have the resources, you don't have enough bodies who are putting the time in to, to do the work. So given the resources that your finance department has, it's absolutely reasonable that we would see these kinds of control deficiencies. To eliminate them, my recommendation would be either hire a qualified person on a closer to full-time basis to assist them, to assist Russ and Darian to be able to focus on some of this, or get a consulting firm and another CPA firm to come and, you know, maybe add that layer of internal controls on a, on a part-time basis, but dedicated just to finances. Again, it's cost benefit that the town would need to decide if it's worth the extra cost to hire an additional person or to bring in a consultant to reduce the risk of these internal controls.
Thank you.
And real quick, the fines you're saying, the $500, how often is that? You said something about here, you can get fined for penalties. Are we being fined?
You are not.
Okay.
No, no, the state could do that.
All right.
The state has not. And I have never seen the state actually do it.
We really don't need that, so I, yeah.
I've never seen the state do it, so.
Okay.
But it could.
Thank you very much.
I have a question. Why are we getting this report in October after a whole year's passed? And what can we do in the future to get it? What's that? All these other small towns, how long does it take to get their audit done?
Six months, six months.
So the requirement by the state is have it done within nine months by June 30th. That's a state requirement, it's most the auditor general. The real delay in just this year was your lack of, lack of dedicated staff. Darian was, from our perspective, pulled in a lot of directions this year. And when Russ is here part-time, two days a week, we'll ask for something on a Monday, maybe get it on a Friday, maybe it's not what we need, and then we'll have to ask for it again the next Monday and get another version on the next Friday. It really drags the process out. We had, actually I have a really short timeline, just to give you real numbers and not made up numbers in my head. We were actually scheduled to start fieldwork January 7th. We had worked with Darian on that to try to accelerate the audit and get it out sooner. There's a very few basic things we need to start and one is just a trial balance. It's a list of your accounts and the amounts in each one. And the year before, we had come out and not had things ready, which had delayed the process and it costs us a lot of money when we do that. We didn't want to do that this year, so I, I basically said, we can't come out till we have this. And so every time that would get close, I'd give her a week's warning. I'd say, well, let's reschedule in two more weeks. We did that until, I think it was February 20th. So it was a month and a half that we had to reschedule our books to get your town's audit on our calendar with our appropriate staff every two weeks for six weeks to even get out here. And that was just with the basics available to us that so needed a lot. So it's, it's not anybody's fault. It's not that anyone wasn't trying their hardest or doing really good work. You know, that certainly won't sound like I'm throwing Darian under the bus as the least because she's been wonderful to work with. It's just a resource thing. When we sat out here for weeks and we could see she was pulled constantly to deal with other town business. And with Russ, and normally, we would see a full-time finance person that we could rely on, that we, that would be the one that would go get us the bank statements we needed or things like that. And when Russ is only available half-time, you know, half-days, two days a week, it just really slows the process down.
So that's more than half the reason, would you say?
I would say that's 90% of the reason.
Oh, good.
We, you know, we, we were, we had appropriate staff, we had the. What happens is when we get big delays during our block that we scheduled to be here and we don't get to finish because we don't have everything we need, then we're fitting you in in other jobs. And so we don't know when the next piece of information is going to show up. Maybe it shows up next week, two weeks, and then we've got to pull people back off to handle that and wrap it up. It's very, very inefficient. I will say that we took a enormous loss doing this work this year. It's just because of how many times we had to pick it up and put it down and pick it up and put it down. It was incredibly inefficient. And again, nobody's fault, it's a resource, it's a resource problem. I think Russ and Darian do a wonderful job and they do the best that they can with the resources that they have. Every year, financial requirements get more complex and more complex between the governmental accounting standards board and the auditor general and the state legislature. They put new reporting requirements, new compliance requirements constantly on small towns and, you know, giant counties alike, and they don't really understand those unintended consequences of making everything more complicated.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No. I would entertain a motion to approve the audit.
Any questions from the audience, maybe?
Oh, well, we have to have a motion before.
Okay. They'll move.
Do we have any questions on the audit from the audience?
Get out of the way.
No, then I think we should do about.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant Conroy?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We've really enjoyed working with you.
Thank you.
Except for. So it is time for public comment. Have you filled out a board, Fred? Thank you.
So I was caught off guard about the town council because I had asked Becca before we started if she would like me to add the Christmas festival to my list of the sunshine and happiness report. And so I should have given it all at my sunshine, at the moment of town council. So I have a few things on my list. If I may address the town.
Yes, thank you. Three minutes.
The Halloween batch is this Thursday, Halloween. It's in front of the library. It's from 5:00 to 7:00. Then it's followed by trunk or treat at the church and that starts at 5:30 with the Boy Scouts. Yard sale, I'm doing these in order so in case you're keeping track. The yard sale, townwide yard sale is this Friday, it's this weekend. We usually just do it Friday and Saturday, but if you want to be out there on Sunday, you can do it too. The library will have yard sale in front of the library. Friends of the library are participating and if you want, if you live out of the town bounds and you want to bring a table, it's $5 donation to the Friends of the Library Friday and Saturday, okay? Number three is scouting for food. The drops, the boys will be putting out door hangers. If they don't hit all of your town, please make a donation. There are drop-off centers. If they put a door hanger, they'll be at your house. If they don't put a door hanger, it will, you can drop it off at town hall, the library, the community church, the Howie Market, or the real estate office at Mission Inn. Last week, I'd like to thank Mr. Scott and Mr. McGill for participating in the county appraiser coming to talk to us at the library. I too did not move here, I moved here from somewhere else and I was wrong in what I was telling my students. I teach real estate and so I wanted to pass along to you. I know everybody thinks that they pay too much in taxes. If you pay your taxes in November, you will save 3% of your tax bill. Tax bill comes up 4%.
4% in November, 3% in December, 2% in January, 1% in February, no savings in March and you're delinquent on April 1st.
And it should be out in your mailbox next week. Thank you for correcting me. So if you want to save money, who doesn't need to save a dime? Okay? Number five is the Christmas festival. It's December 13th and 14th. Check out Howie Tribune for all information. And number six, we talked just one second about the cup and the cup runneth over and we're all going to be in big trouble and pay fines. I suggest that we make a contest, a cup contest, how much water you can save. Mr. Ernest told me one day that water costs one penny a gallon, including the tax. So if we want to save water, our money on our water bill, save water. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Fran. Next, please. JoJo Lowe?
No, I didn't fill out one of those yet.
Yes.
We just have a permanent.
Thank you, Fran. I only have two things to say because the Tribune might not make it out for a couple of events and that one was the yard sale. And please come join us if you live on a dirt road and you go, nobody's going to come out to my house, come to the library. We have a lot of fun. Right now, we have three people signed up, plus us, that's four. We have plenty of room. We have a Medicare, a Medicare presentation at the library on Tuesday, whatever that Tuesday is.
Tomorrow Tuesday or the following one?
The following one.
So that would be actually.
If you have questions about Medicare, I forgot to look when I came up. And we will not have a, a meeting of the town council before the next meet the artist, the third Friday of the month, and it will be the last one for the year. We will not have one in December. So mark your calendars for the 15th in honor of resident Judy Lutkus.
She was lost, gosh, in that referendum.
Oh, no. I'm sorry. Who, do we have another public comment? Mr. Miles?
I have two different subjects that I want.
Can you make sure that you use the mic, Mr. Miles?
I have two subjects I wanted to bring up and they may take a little bit more time, three minutes, because they're totally different subjects. And a question for the mayor. May I address one council person?
The council as a body.
But can I direct my question to a particular council person?
Yes, but we do have to hold this at three minutes.
Okay, here we go then. Councilman McGill, two weeks ago, you proudly proclaimed that you were elected by a majority of the voters who provided you a mandate to clean up the mess in the Howie Town Government. You ran for seat number one in November of 2018 against Christian Sears, the then mayor. The vote count was 379 for McGill, 347 for Sears, a difference of 32 votes. If 17 voters had changed their mind, Mr. Sears would have retained the seat. I don't find that to be a mandate by any stretch of the imagination. At the same election, Martha McFarland received 487 votes compared to 225 votes for Edward E. Smith, a difference of 262 seats. This truly is a mandate from the voters. I think the council recognized this when David Niebel stepped down as mayor. You voted 5 to 0 to place Martha McFarland in the mayor's position. So far, she's doing a wonderful job. You would be well-served to listen and learn from a master, Mayor McFarland, who has the voters' mandate unlike you. Second topic, legal expenses. I've read the entire audit report this year. I saw what the auditor said. Most of the findings in there are related to the town not having a large financial staff. You don't have a finance director, you don't really have a full-time finance person at all in this town. However, in the legal area, during the last three years, fiscal year 16, 17, and 18, the average legal expenditures were $45,246. That's the average.
Mr. Miles, your three minutes is up. Would you like to give?
I'm going to wrap it up.
Can we give?
This, this past fiscal year.
Mr. Miles?
The total was $82,216.
I agree.
That's an increase of almost $37,000.
Mr. Miles?
Or 81.71%. That's enough money that you could hire a full-time finance person to add into the staff, but instead, through your misdeeds and malfeasance, Mr. McGill, you've been writing up legal bills that the people in this town do not want you to incur.
Mr. Miles, please.
Okay.
He asked, he asked me a question and you allowed him, so if he asks me a question.
No, he said he could, could he address you?
Ask a question.
He did ask you a question, he addressed it, but he didn't.
Okay, thanks. Four minutes. If you want, four minutes.
I know, and I was trying to stop him.
Any false information?
A big bit of that influence...
Sir, sir, you're out of line.
Mr. Miles?
Sir, you're out of line, sir.
Mr. Miles?
As always, you're out of line.
Counselor McGill, everybody, please. Counselor McGill, I'll manage the meeting, please. So, thank you, Mrs. Dreason, Karen.
Karen Dreason.
Microphone.
Oh, sorry. Karen Dreason, 121, Cedar. Actually, thank you, Mr. Miles. I think your report was very well done, and I know it was factual. If you know this man's history, background, which some people here don't, but trust me, it was very factual. And there isn't much more that needs to be said about that report. However, I do have one more thing. However, insignificant, Mr. McGill thinks this is. It will show everyone your lack of integrity. Your word means nothing. Things don't go your way in a meeting and bam, you drop out of assisting or participating with any holiday festival committee. You were responsible for orchestrating the classic show, the car show, the classic car show. You were responsible for that. He just left. Gave up, walked away, left people hanging. Because of your behavior and disloyalty to employees, many volunteers that worked tirelessly to put on a great holiday festival, not, of course, the previous mention of attorney fees, on behalf of many residents in the town of Howie, we demand your resignation.
Sounds like Congress sitting here doing, going home.
Pat Miller, Lakeshore Boulevard. A few Venezia residents have indicated that they believe the rest of Howie does not want them here and that we think they're too upset over nothing issues. Well, I'm here to tell you that four or five people out of 1,100 or more do not speak for me. I do not feel that way at all. When I found out that there would be a new community in Howie, I was happy. It was fun to see the new homes go up and the new community come together. My thought was and is, I was able to buy a home in Howie, so why shouldn't they? I'm nervous. I'm not against development. Having a development that has many homes close together is not preferable, but development is inevitable. I welcome each and every one and look forward to having you help us organize events, attend library events, get involved in the town council, and staff positions. This town is not perfect, of course. No town is. They all have their issues, but living is easy and comfortable here. I came here kicking and screaming, but it has grown on me. And really, many of the people who live here are just like you, trying to make a living and to be happy. Welcome to Howie, except, of course, anyone who uses scarfy language.
If there are no more public comments, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.